Present this evening with the exception of Councilman Claybaugh and Councilman Partey. The Open Meetings Act is posted on the West Wall and is accessible to the general public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or a citizen so requests. First item on the Consent Agenda is Item A, Approve Agenda As Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place On File All Notices Pertaining To This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place On File All Materials Having Any Bearing On This Meeting. Item D, Approval Of Treasurers' Report Of Claims In The Amount Of... I beg your pardon. Item D, Approval Of Minutes Of Regular Meeting On February 2nd, 2015, as on file in the City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval Of The Treasurers' Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $646,337.05. Item F, Approval Of The Boswell Report Of Claims In The Amount Of $51,166.07. Item G, Approval Of Write-Off Of Ambulance Bad Debts. Item H, Resolution Number 5740, Approving A Request From The Beatrice Area Chamber Of Commerce To Close Highway 136, Which Is Also Known As Court Street, From 3rd Until To 19th Street On Saturday, June 20th, 2015, Between The Hours Of 8:00 AM And 12:00 PM For The Homestead Days Parade. Item I, Resolution 5741, Appointing David Esker As Chairman Of The Beatrice Board Of Public Works. Item J, Resolution Number 5742, Entering Into Agreement With Felsberg, Holt, And Yulebig To Provide An On-Call MS4 Compliance Assistance Service, Task 5 Stormwater Training And Annual Reporting. And Item K, Resolution Number 5743, Entering Into An Agreement With Felsberg, Holt, And Yulebig To Provide Nebraska H2O Construction Post-Construction Stormwater Management Program Development Proposal For Phase 2. Is there any item a council member would like removed from the agenda? Ted?
Mayor, I don't need to remove it, but I'd need to abstain from Item D. I wasn't at the meeting, I have no idea if the minutes are correct.
Alright, so noted. Any other item? Anyone from the public like an item removed? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda be approved, accepted, and or ratified as presented.
Second. Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach. And your vote, please. And that is approved. Ted, you want to abstain?
Yeah, I just noted that one.
Thank you.
Just abstain on D.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. A public hearing on the 1 and 6-year road and street plan for the city of Beatrice. And Jason, you want to give us a rundown on the plan that you and James Burrows have?
What we're looking at this year, James and I were able to set down... James and I were able to set down and try and come up with a plan a little bit different than what we've done in past years. The biggest thing that what we've done in the previous years is we've always had kind of an approach where we grabbed a road here, and we grabbed a road here, and we grabbed a road here, but we never really put a plan together as far as being able to get a section of town taken care of. And what that has led to is we're looking at streets nowadays that are... Some are 14, I seen a 14, and I seen a road that was 20-years-old before it was armor-coated last. You know, and on a street that has low volume, pushing it off 10-years, maybe, you know, on low volume. But you have problems where you have your snowplows wear aggregate off, traffic, just everyday traffic will wear aggregate off. You get cracks in your streets, it happens. And what James and I were able to do is we sat down and we divided the city into six quadrants based on linear feet of asphalt streets. And we were able to go and get them pretty close, pretty close, based on linear feet. And linear feet falls into how much we're looking at for armor coating these sections. Now, when I say dividing them into quadrants, we're looking at just for armor coats. It's not for the mill and overlays, it's not for concrete reconstruction, it's just for the armor coats. But what we were able to do is we sat down and we tried looking at the streets that had the largest number of streets that had the longest since they had been armor coated last. And we were able to look at the west side, and the west side had the largest number of streets that had the oldest, or the most amount of years since they were previously armor coated. So what we were able to do this year, we were able to sit down and based off of quadrants, put the west side down as an armor coat, so every asphalt street on the west side is going to be armor coated this year. I believe next year, if you look at your maps, you're looking at, I believe the... I believe it is the Country Club area and around the old Good Samaritan area down around there. What we're looking at is, I don't necessarily want to say right now that we're going to move in a counterclockwise or clockwise motion, because what I think I would like to do is be able to say that we're going to look at what streets are the worst, and then we'll go to that section. When we move through there, what this guarantees is, though, is it guarantees that within six years, as long as there are no unforeseen circumstances where we would have loss of funding, or something of a... Some large scale where we would have to put money towards, we should be able to armor coat every street in the city of Beatrice within six years, starting in the year 2015. And for us to be able to say that on a lot of our streets is, you know, to me, I believe it's a, I mean, it's a very proactive approach towards getting our streets in the best shape we can get there. You know, and if you look at the map, you know, if you want to look at the, kind of what we're looking at, this year we're looking at the mill and overlays. We do have Scott Street from 6th to 9th. Originally, that was going to be a 10th and 11th, but due to the fact that we have to look at ADA ramps now being, whenever we mill and overlay a project, and let's use the 10th Street as an example, 10th Street from Lincoln to Monroe, that stretch, since whenever we mill through there, that stretch will have to have all of the ADA ramps replaced to bring them up to code on every corner going through there.
What is the cost to each intersection?
James is speculating at about $10,000 per ramp, so we're looking at about $40,000 per intersection.
Per intersection?
So, and that's something that we really, hasn't happened in the past, but it's something that with new ADA guidelines, even ramps that were put in just two or three years ago on the 136 project west of... Going west, none of those ramps are compliant anymore. And so, what it means is, and that's just a couple of years old. And sure, the codes change, and that's what's happened. The code has changed on them. We have to go back in and we have to bring them up to standard. And so, what we're looking at is, not only do we as a city have to bring forth an ADA ramp policy that we're going to change X amount of ADA ramps each year, we looked at it as, okay, if the street department is going to have to change the ADA ramps, whenever we do a construction project in an intersection, we have to change it, let's tie it to the 1 and 6, and when a mill and overlay goes through it, we tie the ramps into it. That way, it can go towards our project. There's no reason to have a nice new street and have your ramps not be compliant. It does state, I believe, that is, any mill and overlay project of 2 inches or less, that the ramps do not have to be replaced. They don't have to be. So that's where you have a very slim line. Anything more than 2 inches, you have to, it's mandated that you do, but anything 2 inches or less, you don't have to. It's just that if we're going to go through and we're going to do these mill and overlay projects, and we have to come up with an ADA ramp policy, then it would be very prudent on our part not to change these ramps, so that when we leave a corridor, everything is done right. And so, when we're looking at the streets, bringing back up to Scott Street from 6th to 9th, the ADA ramps will not be done on that street, because it is that 2 inches or less. And the reason we're not going to do the ADA ramps on that street is because the sidewalks are back of curb, and not only are the curbs shot, but the sidewalks are shot from that stretch. So, it doesn't make sense for us to put ADA ramps in that won't match up to sidewalks that are... In a lack of a better term, the sidewalks really are not in good shape. So it doesn't make sense for us to do the ADA ramps and have a match up to bad sidewalks. So, but getting back to the 10th Street project, we will do, we will do those on that stretch. And what we've done is the, going from 6th to 9th on Scott, cutting off 10th and 11th Street, the money we saved on that mill and overlay, because those two blocks are the best of that stretch, the money we saved there, we can put towards the mill, we can put towards ADA ramps on 10th Street, and as well as Bell Street also, because Bell Street is also a mill and overlay from 6th to 10th, and we'll be able to use it on the ramps there.
Stan.
Rich?
Now, on the armor coat, we're not required to put the ADA.
No.
I didn't think so.
No.
Well, most of them over there don't have sidewalks anyway, so...
More than, it has to be more than 2 inches than we're required for that. Anything of a changing of more than 2 inches, or more than 2 inches, I'm sorry. But, you know, if you look down through, you're looking at Thayer Street, Thayer Street is on the west side, that is, that's, I believe that's one of our oldest armor coats we have in town, and that one block stretch over there on south, it's Thayer, going south of Scott, is extremely rough. It is, it's in really bad shape. So we're going to go ahead and mill and overlay that, the curbs are in good shape on it, it'll have ADA ramps also put on that one. You can look down through, you see the armor coats, if it's an asphalt street, it will be armor coated. And then at the very bottom, you've got the concrete reconstruction for the new intersection of Industrial Row and Highway 77.
Questions?
You're going to do the Scott Street one?
Scott Street.
Yeah, West Scott.
West Scott, between Sumner and Sherman?
Between Sherman and Sherman.
Now, we're going to patch that.
That's patched.
And we will patch it. And what we'll do is, because we're looking into the Nebraska Board Of Classifications And Standards to find out exactly what we can do on that stretch, because that stretch is kind of a, it's kind of a, not only is the road not quite wide enough, but the drainage on the north side, in order for us to be able to make a hard surface on it, we have to be able to put 6-foot shoulders on both sides. If we have enough area on the south side, but we don't have enough on the north side to be able to put a 6-foot shoulder at the correct grade, and then match up to the drainage at the toe of the slope. And the stretch that we're looking at is between Cedar Street, I believe, well, actually, it would be from Sherman, pretty much that whole stretch. But Sumner, from Sumner to Cedar, we may be able to come up with the distance, it's just from Cedar to Sherman, that because of the school right along there, we just don't really have the area to give us a 6-foot clear zone, and then give us drainage.
Is that classified a hard section, or is it still classified gravel?
Classified as gravel.
That's what I thought.
Yes, it is.
Jim snuck some of those in years and years ago to overlay that.
Yes, it is. That one's classified as gravel. So anytime we go in there to change the surface of the roadway, we have to put it on a 1 and 6. Anytime you change the surface of a roadway, you have to put it on...
Ted?
Well, Jason, first of all, I like the plan. As I read through it, until I got to year, I thought you were just doing it, picking a section and doing it counterclockwise till I got to year 5, and then I realized that you were, that wasn't what was being done, but I didn't have any problem with it. So, Mike, but I do have a couple of concerns. We, and I brought these up in the past. First of all, the, just so people in the community know, the ramps, the ADA ramps, we've been working on those in the city. Mayor Marshad started that when we were here, so, I mean, it's something that has been brought up, we've been working on it for a long time. It isn't anything new. Armor coating, streets, do we have, do you have armor coating, as I'm reading, as I read through here, I don't think there's any of these streets that your armor coating don't have curb and gutter, is that right?
That do not have curb and gutter?
Correct. They all have curb and gutter where your armor coating. As I looked through it, I didn't, because this is...
I'm thinking right off the top of my head, I believe that there are, there is only one, there are two streets that don't have curb and gutter, and that would be Bluff Street, down from the highway down to Scott, and from, and that would be the stretch there. And then there is a one, there's about 400-feet on South Sumner, from the end of the concrete to the city limits, that does not have curb.
Okay. You're do, okay, so this is my concern. Remember years ago when we were doing Scott at 13th, in that area, and I don't know whether you were on the council that time, but when we actually got ready to put curb and gutter in, we'd armor coated that so many times, that we actually had shrunk the width of the street by 3 feet. So, because we're not, because we don't ever pave to the edges. So that's my concern, that if we're going to, if you're going to armor coat, you're going to asphalt something that doesn't have curb and gutter, that we can't hit to a solid surface, that it's designed that you go past the edges.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Is that part of this?
You can. You can, with the equipment that they have, you can, they can slide those heads out.
Okay.
The fact that it wasn't done in the past is probably something that may not have been picked up.
Every time we would do it, we would shrink the street by 3 or 4 inches on each side. And it was, I think it was, I think it was up to 3 feet in some places on Scott.
Unfortunately, the, what they call it a chip spreader, and the chip spreader, and then you have your distributor. The distributors, you can slide those out to 13 feet, you can slide them out to 14 feet. If it's, if it's the fact that it didn't get done in the past, it may have been that a contractor wasn't paying attention, I'm not going to speak to what happened in the past.
I don't...
I, I'm not, that's not what I'm after. I think that there's, could it have happened? Yes. Because if you trim a little here and there, it saves on oil, it saves you, and you still get paid for the price.
I'm not trying to dwell on what happened in the past either, I'm trying to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
It will not happen again.
Okay. So my only other question is, and I ask this every time we have a 1 and 6-year, is the what-if? Okay, as I look through here, and you're allocating all your funds, but if we have a paving district someplace, where we're responsible, so, how are you going to make that decision? Is, now you've cordoned this thing off, do you go by strictly by traffic count, or do you go by years that it's been since it's been taken care of? How do you determine what you're going to remove if, from that year's plan?
What are we taking off?
Yeah.
If I have to come up with more money, what am I going to do?
If we have a paving district, something like that, what do you, how do you plan to do that?
First off, if I have to come up with more money, the first place I would go to right now, if I had to come up with money, depending on how much money you're looking at, if I had to, first off, before I would trim any streets off, because armor coat is very inexpensive. It's about $900 a block. So it's on a 24-foot surface, very inexpensive, probably the most inexpensive and best bang for your buck you can get for a street. What we would probably do is, we would look to, we would look for curb and gutter, our curb and gutter budget, the money that we have set aside for curb and gutter. We have, we have a decent amount of money, we've already taken a little bit of money, as you can see, we've pulled about $50,000 out of our curb and gutter. We still have another $50,000 set aside in that account. If you, if you look...
You took it out for each year, right?
No, it's just out of this year, because we don't have the Department of Roads money this year.
Okay.
So, we, because if you remember right, last year, when Rex came to us, Rex told us all that this was going to be the very first year that he could ever remember that we did not have any armor coats on the 1 and 6 for this year. We were able to set down, James and I were able to set down and try and find some money, so that we could put it together and we could find streets to armor coat this year. And so, we had $100,000 set aside for curb and gutter this year. That was roughly, that was close to 2,900 feet of curb and gutter, which, which is an extreme amount, I mean, large-scale extreme amount. And what we're looking at is, this year, we decided we were going to pull $50,000 out of it, set it aside. That still leaves us 1,400 feet, about 1,400 to 1,500 feet, right in there, of curb and gutter that we can replace. And what we're looking at is, we will take it and look at the streets that we're going to have projects on next year, and our curb, we're going to fix the curbs this year, that will have the street projects done on them next year, so that going forward from here, we're not going to mill and overlay a street that's got busted curbs. We will have replaced the curbs the previous year.
Okay. So the only thing that I would, that I would ask you to do is moving forward, not this year necessarily, you've got that all set, but moving forward, as you set up your funding for your curb and gutter, that you don't designate necessarily just for replacement, but we have streets that actually need it because of the problem that we have, I'd like to see us actually put some curb and gutter in on some streets. And if you'd add that into your 1 and 6-year, I'd be supportive of that.
Okay, and I can't put curb and gutter into a 1 and 6.
6.
I can't do that. I can tell you, if you want to know where I've got curb, one gutter set aside, I can tell you now where I've got probably 700-feet spoken for right now, 5th and Perkins, or 5th and Ames, where we got the new corner put in down there, along 5th Street, we're going to do some, on Lincoln Street, I believe, between 8th and 9th.
But I'd like to see it, some done on South Center, as, from, by the Scott Street ball field.
You want new curb and gutter.
That's what he said.
You want new curb and gutter installed.
South Center Street.
On that concrete stretch?
Past that, as it goes past the ballpark, so you can actually put solid surface on that.
Okay, okay, that's bran, okay, you're looking at new construction.
New construction.
Okay, and then, then we're looking at down the road, if we're looking at that, then that's a project down the road, what we need to look at for concrete reconstruction to make South Center Street hard surface.
Take it down to Ellen.
What's that?
Take it down to Ellen, that...
I'm guessing you're talking about going to Bell here, if you're talking, okay.
Through the cross, Ellen.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Ted. Anyone else?
If we would, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask anyone from the public, have a comment, recommendations, constructive criticism? All right, continue, Jason. Sorry to interrupt you.
Not a problem, I'm sorry. If you would like to move over to 2nd Street, or a 2nd year, we're looking at the 2nd year. You're looking at the 2 projects that we have in our 2nd year, you're looking at the Highway 77 to Ella Street. That is our historic reconstruction that we've got going on, on the bricks. We do have money set aside for that construction, and that was the curb-to-curb, 6-inch concrete, and then reset the bricks on top for that 1-block stretch.
And there's still the Transportation Enhancement Grant that's still available?
Yes, there is. I believe we've got the money set aside, we have the money set aside for that. So, and what we've done is, is James and I sat and looked at this stretch, this 1-block stretch, and we thought, you know, if, if we're going to disturb traffic, and we know we've got a bad stretch to the north of this, let's tie the whole thing on, and let's do it in 1 year, so that we're not coming through doing 1 block 1 year, and 1, another stretch the next year, and messing up the traffic going to the industrial park, because, because that is, in fact, it's probably an arterial for us, because of the amount of traffic that that street holds. And what we're looking at is, we have concrete reconstruction for that first block from Ella to 77. We went ahead and we went from Ella to Grant, and we're going to do concrete reconstruction on that next stretch, and hopefully be able to go in there and change everything curb to curb. And be able to, because the street itself is low, it has, it has no drainage, or very, very little. We always have troubles with the intersection down towards Grant Street flooding because of a low area. We're looking at going in and putting in storm sewers to the north end, storm sewers to the south end, to carry the water, to get it back off of that stretch. Long-term plan, I think in the next couple of years, I think that that corridor could, hopefully it'll look very nice in the next couple of years. We'll be able to get that stretch, because it is such an important stretch that carries traffic not only around town, but through the, to the industrial park, so...
And you're going to reroute the traffic how?
Right now, the plan would be to reroute traffic up Grant Street Hill, and it'll either end up being up to 4th, or it'll end up being up to 6th, up to 6th Street and around. Most likely, if I had to say, I would, myself, I would rather see it go to 6th Street, so that we don't have any problems with the school going on. You try and get this done in the summertime, but that's a big project, to be able to get the 1 block from Ella to 77, as well as Ella to Grant, it could very well stretch into school. So, and it may end up being a fall project by the time they get the south, because you have to get the south block done first, and then go north, so that everything ties into the first block. So, it may very well end up being a fall project, and if that's the case, I'd want to see traffic routed up to 6th Street, so that we don't interfere with the middle school.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Mr. Catlin, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:25 PM.
Second. Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, the public hearing be closed. Any further discussion? And your vote, please. That passes 6-0. I would then entertain a motion to approve the 1 and 6-year street improvement plan as presented.
Mayor, I move that the 1 and 6-year road and street improvement plan for the city of Beatrice be approved as presented.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that the 1 and 6-year road plan as presented be approved. Jason, I too like the way that you and James have broken this up into different quadrants, and the fact that anything that's armor coated this year, 6 years from now, could be due for another armor coat, so it's a good idea. Your vote, please. And that is approved, 6-0. Next is a resolution entering into an agreement with NIAPCO to set terms of distribution of a grant from the Nebraska Department Of Economic Development for an expansion project.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5744 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Cook, that Resolution fifty-seven forty-four be passed and adoption, adopted. And your discussion, please.
If you'll recall, this is part of a grant that DED awarded to the city, ultimately for Niapco to expand at their location. We have the agreement done between DED and the city, this is agreement between the city and Niapco.
And we're a pass-through.
We're just a pass-through. We simply collect the funds and forward them on to Niapco as they complete the project.
Comments from the council? Anybody from the audience that wants to discuss this? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven forty-four.
Please no vote.
Beg your pardon?
We already have a motion wishing to vote.
Sorry. Your vote, please. And that is approved, six-zero, fifty-seven forty-four has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a loan from the LB eight forty fund to Dempster LLC in the amount of a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Mayor, I move that Resolution number fifty-seven forty-five be passed and adopted.
Second.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbach. Resolution number fifty-seven forty-four be approved. Mr. Jones, on behalf of CARC, do you want to give us your recommendation?
Thank you. CARC recommended this on a unanimous vote, primarily based on the structure of it, equity by the owner, equal financing by us and the bank, and city being paid back prior to standard lending institution, which is a first for us, so we were more than happy to approve that structure. And it's on a six-month request, so.
The proprietors of Dempster LLC are here tonight. If they want to make any type of a presentation, that's fine. If not, we'll move on. Mr. Mitchell?
Let's just do a quick thing there. Miss Merrick, you'll mind, please?
Absolutely.
So, I just wanna thank you for the opportunity. I'm Ryan Mitchell, president of Dempsters LLC. I think as the chair of the Community Advisory Review Council basically said to committee, our basic thing is to do this, personally guaranteeing it, we've got matching equity. Thank you for the councils who came out. I know it's a busy time for everyone else as well. I think one of the biggest things for us is, we've basically came forward and said what we're gonna do, and we're just quite proud to be here and what we've got developed. So, we had seventeen spreaders that were sold out, we've got a run of thirteen, thirty that we're doing now, sorry, correction, thirty. And one of our biggest things is just trying to do this and get some things back up and running, so thank you for your time, and take any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Mr. Mitchell? Yes, sir.
There used to be four sizes. Are there still four sizes? There was a small, medium, medium-large, and large. Are you still developing the four sizes?
We're actually doing three, so we're doing a two-hundred and a two-hundred adjustable, so it's kinda the same size, but just a little different than two-fifty. One of the biggest things that I think Dempsters Industries, the previous companies, and the Proud Hundred Thirty-five industry years, is that they had too many options. So, if you look for a lot of things, they do small, medium, large, and that's what we've done. We streamlined that, makes it a lot easier for our manufacturing. So, we've got a two-hundred series, which is a six-ton, a two-hundred that's an adjustable, and then a two-fifty, which is an eight-ton spreader. And those have been our main lines, and that's what the sales reps, our distributors, forward distributors, and our actual farmers and co-ops have requested from us. So, that's why we're doing that.
Are they still built on the same design as the old ones were?
Yes. If you've seen some of the changes that are there, we've got like new colors, new tarps, but the same quality design that's been there and patent that's been there, with the same actual employees and the same designs, that's made it, since about the sixties, we've sold over six thousand spreaders. So, it's not broken, we're not gonna fix it. We're doing small enhancements, that's about it.
To be quite honest with you, years and years and years ago, I did have the privilege of running one of those behind a tractor, and they are, they're quite a machine. They're simple, and they are built like brick houses. And I'm not one of, I can loan the money, but I'm gonna acquiesce on this one, this is a good deal.
Thanks, Rich. Ted?
Mr. Mitchell, I just wanna tell you, you're getting my vote tonight, and I was one of the, I was here when you were here before, and I voted against your funding request, and so I just wanted to let you know that for everything that I saw that in your last request that I was skeptical of, and I voted, that I was voting for, against it, I'm voting for it tonight. I appreciate, although I'm not an accountant, as I look through your financials that you provided to us, it appears to me that you're putting more money back into your company than you're taking yourself, and I applaud you for that. The letters of recommendation that you got from people here in our area, some of them that I know personally, kudos to that. So, you've got my vote tonight, so good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Rich.
Rich?
You have a distributor that's putting this in on consignment. Do you see down the line where they may be, instead of consignment, be putting them into a line as such?
We've had a request from quite a few distributors to do that, if so, our margins get cut drastically. So, as you see from our financials, kind of my banking background, it doesn't make sense yet, especially with this being sold out. So, something that we entertain, yes, something they put into preorder, then yes, where they're putting up and prepaying, it makes sense, but on the other side, we've got such a huge demand yet, it doesn't make sense. So, we're basically doing the equivalent of a rep situation, where it's on there, we still own it, they get a, it's not an in-camera session, so if you don't mind, I don't wanna say the commission side of it, that they get, but it's a good commission, but it's way more profitable for us to do it the way we're doing it. If we were getting into the fifty or a hundred, which we probably would have been comfortable doing a fifty run, and being able to sell that, just with the finances, we're being conservative doing thirty right now. So, that's why we chose a rep model. Distributors, if that came in and there was huge demand, which there already is, then that's fine, but we'd have a massive slash in our margins, almost in a half, so it doesn't make sense for what we're doing right now.
Okay, now you're putting two on each lot on a consignment. Once one sells, will they let you bring in another one for consignment?
Almost every single one of them, as soon as it's done, it's replaced.
Good.
And that's Bruny Implements, Oregon Trail, and there's numerous other ones, we've just gotta watch for some conflict, but they're all wanting to do it, and they also have an ability to add some extra services to it as well, which is a great value for the customer.
Good, good.
Mr. Morgan?
I don't really have a question, it's probably more of a comment. You know, I too am gonna vote yes for this. I think that, you know, number one, you hung in here with Beatrice, and we appreciate that. And number two, it's a, you know, it's a solid opportunity for us to say we're open for business. I mean, when you look at some of the plans that have come before, they're never been quite as funded the way these are, and backing, so from my perspective, I appreciate the fact that you're here in Beatrice, you know, you're saying you're here to stay, and we look for success.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan, appreciate it.
Anyone else?
This makes us a lot more comfortable than some of the.
Any else, anyone else from the public that would like to say something? Glenis, come on up.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for your consideration. I just wanted to, just for the record, I'll let you know again that the Engage Board took a look at this before I went to CARC, and again, they voiced their support for it. And basically, as what's been mentioned, is that I think, again, this would be a good show of community support, and we know that there's other products that, you know, hopefully will continue to be developed, and this company can get back and grow here, and again, I think that we can just look forward to good things. And just I hear all the time that the Dempsters products were very quality, and again, I don't think we wanna lose this opportunity to continue to help this company, so.
And I still have my two frogs.
Okay.
Thanks, Glenis. Thanks for the work of the Engage Board, also CARC, and Mr. Mitchell, thanks for investing in Beatrice, we appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
All right. Any further discussion? I would ask for your vote, please. And that is approved, six-zero. Thank you.
Good luck.
There are no ordinances. Next item is the public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. And I think Mr. Vetrovsky, who is the outgoing chair of the Board of Public Works, has just a few comments. Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Don Vetrovsky, twenty-twenty-one Jefferson, currently serving as the Beatrice Public Works chairman. And gentlemen, I just wanted to take a few minutes to come in and reminisce, and as I wrote Stan in my letter, my appointment is up for this year, and to serve on the board would take another five-year commitment upon my part. And I was appointed to the board in nineteen ninety-six, and the vote went six-two, if I remember that era. But I was, I came back, I came on board in nineteen ninety-seven. So, eighteen years of serving the board, that I've developed a compassion for and a love for, is gonna come to an end. It's just that time. And also, not only that, for the eighteen years that I served on the board, Mayor Grayl appointed me in nineteen eighty-three to serve on the planning and zoning. So, thirty-two years, I've served on a capacity of either being on planning, zoning, on this council for eight years, and since then on the Board of Public Works. And just wanted to take time just to reflect and say, thanks for the cooperation of the council. Served with a many a number of people, but I sit back and I think in terms of, you know, Tobias, thank you for your leadership, and Greg, and to Janet for their help, and then, you know, through the years, Jim Bauer served as on the, as administrator, and Neil Niedfeld. So, we've had some great people over the years. But the current department head, such as Pat Feist with the Electrical Department, Steve Kelly with the Water, Dean Kelch with the WPC, and then just recently, you heard from Jason on the Streets Department, wow, you've got a good group of people. And I would encourage that you listen to them, like Jason put together, and with James, building, with our engineer, put together a well of a plan. And these people have got the best interest of the city in their heart when they plan and work, and putting their budgets together. So, I encourage you to listen to them, and the current board, and I served with a lot of members over the past eighteen years, but the current board with Bob Moran, Darren Bear, Rich Moon, and now newly-elected Chair Dave Eskra will do a fine job. You know, and in the future, what we got looking at too, you know, a lot of the things that we've done, we've tried to put in place, and with your cooperation and support, we have done that with the Water Department in planning on a certain amount of new water line coming in for infrastructure. Same way with Dean, now with the WPC. Just recently, you helped develop a ten-year plan on regards to how we can upgrade the WPC plant to be in operation. So, we've done a great job with that, and I hope that you continue to do that. Now, we'll get into the Electric Department, and I just, like I told Stan, I got a couple of, two cents that I wanna put in on this before, off of this officially. But we're coming into a contractual agreement with Nebraska Public Power. And gentlemen, I, nineteen eighty-eight, I voted on one of the first contracts that we came in with NPPD. And it's a great commitment, and it takes a lot of concentration and dedication and belief that what you're gonna enter into is gonna be the right thing for the city. And we started the process now, that within the next five years, they'll be coming together, be coming and putting a contract together for you to take a look at, and for the board to take a look at. And please consider what they have to offer. I mean, I still think it's the best bang for the dollar, long-term. You know, I know that there's some discern and some concerns about what's happened in the past, but that's in the past, but we gotta keep remembering we're looking forward. But I think in terms of, a few years back, they had about a nine percent increase, and the board was able to absorb five percent of that, and we passed along a four percent. And that was explained to us, basically, the increase on that was due to the fact that their transportation costs of negotiating a new contracts with the railroad to haul coal increased by seventy percent. Well, they had a long-term contract of about twenty, twenty-five years, so the railroad, of course, wants to get caught up and plan ahead, so I can understand that. But we had, Mr. Ash was here a number of times, and then since then, Mr. Pope, the new CEO of Nebraska Public Power, has been down, and they've talked about trying to do the best they can for their members and their customers of NPPD. And I think they really are trying to do that, for the fact of, one, is that in the last couple of years, we've had no increase or very minimal, and they keep projecting this in for the next few years. But some of the hidden things that NPPD provides, and I've always been impressed with that, is their support with economic development. And us being a consumer of Nebraska, NPPD, we are entitled to some of that economic development expertise they have. And if we're not a member of NPPD, chances are we're gonna lose that. And also, the substations that are throughout southeast Nebraska, or in the Beatrice area, that they are responsible for, that if we are no longer a customer of theirs, then who gets the bill when it's time to an upgrade, or we have a problem with that substation to get it repaired? We will take care of it, but it's at our cost. There are some things, the grass always looks greener on the other side, and I told Mr. Thompson that, he was at our meeting the last time around, I said, "We looked at this contract in a rough draft form," and I says, "We really didn't get any really warm, fuzzy feeling about the contract that you're," and basically, it was with the exit fees. And he says, "Just remember that it's very early in the rough draft, and they would take a look at that." But we at least are starting to express our concerns on behalf of this community with NPPD. And I think they will come up with a comfortable plan. Now, you gotta remember, nothing is gonna be perfect on their part or on our part, but if it's something that we can live with comfortably, that they have, and that they can live with us in a comfortable manner, I think it's a good contract. But believe me, you'll have ample time to discuss this over the next few years, but I think you wanna keep in mind of what that is gonna, how that can influence this community. And I still, like I said, it's, they're a local public power, they're basically nonprofit, they're within the state, and we've had good working relationships with them for the past, since I've been around, thirty-some years, and I hope we can continue that. But then, you know, I look back also, going back the full thirty-two years, and just wanna share with you some of the things that I'm proud of, what, and I'm talking about we, 'cause I served on these committees, or on these councils and the boards, but it was a cooperation of everybody. You know, I was just one person that happened to be in a position that, when things happened, I was on either the planning, zoning, on the council, on the Board of Public Works, but there was a lot of people that are involved in this. But you know, we've had our disappointments, and that's with anything, but I also wanna share with you about some of the things that we do have. Number one, back in eighty-three, if you look back and think, that we only had one building out the industrial park, and that was the spec building that was put up, and now you take a look at the industrial park where we're at today. I mean, positive things happened there. And the other things that have happened, whether it's just government, school district, joint effort between community, the private sector, but over the past thirty-two years, we've got a new library, relocation of the Police Department, relocation of the city and board offices, a new BPW Service Center, we've got a water park, we've got hike and bike trails available for our citizens, and we've got a new high school with a wonderful performance arts center, we've got a new hospital, and just recently, a newly renovated Carnegie Building. I think that's not bad. I think that is a positive thing that this community needs to take pride of, and be proud of, that they're part of doing, of part of this. You know, I know there are some negative thoughts out there, but it's the citizens of this community that helped make this happen, and it took the leadership of the boards that were involved. Once you explain this to our citizens, and I firmly, firmly believe this with all my heart, you explain it, you give it an opportunity to help support this, they will do that. I believe that. Look what I just listed, what we've done. And that's because we've been able to explain to the public why the need is there, and if they know the need is there and they believe it, this community will support it, and that's why I love living here. Why in the world, when other people wanna come in, you just have the gentleman from Dempsters that are coming in that believes in this community. Mr. Morgan, I appreciate your comments, and all the other comments, why they're supporting them. They're in Beatrice, and we are open for business, and we need to tap the horn on what we've accomplished. We have lost some, but that's competition, and that's nutrition.
Doug, can we make a commercial out of that?
But then, I just wanna just thank everybody for this. I mean, it's, like I said, the people that we have working, and I'm talking we, whether it's we, the employees, and when I'm talking employees, whether they're on the board side or on the city side, we all work for the city, and that's the we thing. There's no I in it, and it's we. And I wanna thank the news media, 'cause, you know, Doug's been around for a good number of years at the KWBE. Scott, you've covered the board meetings for the Board of Public Works for a good number of years, and I appreciate that, your honesty, your integrity, and how you present the story. I can't fold any of that. But I go back, and I think in terms of, you know, what Mom and Dad, Jordan and Vetrovsky taught me, was loyalty, integrity, and honesty. And then also, working for Mr. Lewis Gooseon for thirteen years by a man that, I just learned a lot of leadership, and there was a gentleman that believed in volunteerism. He got me to the first chamber banquet, and he served on the Board of, he served on the Board of Public Works for a couple of, for a term, I believe, and he taught me, like I said, volunteerism, what it means to be part of the community. And over the years, gosh, giving me time off to do that, and then for twenty-three years, I ran the business of Homestead Dairy Equipment, and my partners at that time, to allow me time off, and my current employer, which is Midwest Livestock Systems, and Barry Lures as a general manager, to allow me the time to do this, for some compassion that I love, and that's serving. And gentlemen, I can't think of anything else to say, other than the real cornerstone in my family is my two daughters and Verella. She's the cornerstone, we've been together for forty-four years, and she's supported me every way you can think of, and you can't ask more for an individual to do that. But gentlemen, I thank you for the opportunity, and if you ever need any thoughts or comments that you need, you know, I'll be available. I'm not, I'm not leaving the community, I'm just stepping down from a long service that I'm truly, truly proud of, and the people that I served and tried to lead. And thank you all.
Thank you very much, Don. Thank you very much for your service, too.
For putting up with us for all those years.
Rich?
Thanks a lot, buddy.
Even though I was one of the two.
The next item on the agenda is the annual meeting is coming up of Engage. Glenis, are you going to take the floor? Tobias said he would do it also, so you guys can, you can tag team.
Sure. As the bylaws for Engage require, that there's an annual meeting coming up, and there are two issues before this annual meeting that need approval or voting on by the city, and so we need to discuss with you and see what the city's recommendation is on those. First one is a proposed amendment to the bylaws. Currently under the bylaws, the Beatrice City Council has a voting member on the Engage Board, which led to the conflict earlier, which Mr. Morgan had to abstain from a vote. And the amendment before you would remove that voting board position for the city council, and would give them an ex officio member. They're still involved in all the meetings, they still attend everything, they are no longer a voting board member of the Engage Board. That would remove the conflict, if any of those types of applications would come forward again. And then obviously, the second issue is election of board directors. We just need to have a representative who's gonna go vote on behalf of the city.
And I just might add that, even though that person would be ex officio, I think very, very key and important role on our board, though, as far as being there, and the connection with you, and same way with the county representative, so it'd just be a matter of, as a board. So it'd just be a matter of, as the board is discussed, I think the, you know, the preference would be that the county rep and the city rep are able to vote at the highest level, and this is the highest level on this board, on your council versus our board, so...
Comments?
I wasn't here when you set up the Engage, but wasn't that one of the stumbling blocks from the old... I'm not sure how that came down. Maybe I'll just wait and talk to you Friday about it.
Well, I think that was one of the stumbling blocks, and I'll address that.
I don't remember.
But, you know, for Mr. Morgan not to be able to vote on an issue that comes before the city council because of a recommendation from Engage, because he sits on that board, I think that is, that is actually a roadblock for us. So I think an ex officio member still will sit through the meetings, the ex officio member still can sit in executive session and hear everything that the Engage Board is hearing. But his confidentiality still has to be maintained, and whatever the Engage Board is doing, we've got a good line of communication with the Engage Board today, but Mr. Morgan could bring back to us also. And I think that was part of the problem last time, is that information was not brought back to the council or to the county board. Ted?
Yeah, the voting, voting part for Bob's position or the county position, and I wasn't, I didn't serve on the council when you actually put Engage back together, but that was the biggest problem that we had with the old Economic Development Organization, that this body didn't feel like they had a voting right. And we put that in, that was one of the things that was put into place simply because they weren't going to get any funding if we didn't have a voice. I think that, I think that since that time, since Engage has been developed and we've started moving forward, I think it's evolved enough to where Bob's position or the council position on that should be able to step back at this time. We still have the ability to, we'll have this discussion again next year, when, because we're going to, we bring this up annually, and if things change, we can simply implement that voting right back if we discover that the information system's slipping away from us. So I would suggest to all of you to put him in as an ex officio member and keep it that, we can change it back. So, because I think it's evolved enough to...
Yeah, and you know, I would say that, you know, when Engage got started, it might have been probably the right move.
Yep.
And, you know, now that we're really coming up on three years, there's been some growth. I think there's been some trust. I think there's been a number of things that have taken place where it's probably time to step back and be the ex official for both the city and the county moving forward.
And it sounds like the county is on board with this also, according to Mr. Dorn.
One thing I have noticed, when you called Glynnis, at least she'll call you back, the one we had before, you couldn't get over.
In the past.
In the past. All right. Thank you, Glynnis.
That's a compliment.
Thanks, Tobias.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Jason was sitting back there, I couldn't see the chief behind him. No disrespect, Jason.
Chief, you've got quite a long report.
Yes, I do.
Don't read it, don't read it word by word, please.
I'm not going to read it word for word. In fact, I'm going to basically just paraphrase a couple of things. We've got a couple of new council members, I thought I'd explain a couple terminology things that might be relevant, and then we'll certainly have time for questions. One of the things that's changed is the state now requires a minimum number of formal training hours. Every officer has to have twenty hours of continuous education in a formal setting, meaning it's got to be something we can document. We were in good shape because we've been doing that for a long time. So it didn't require much other than the training officer to have to do a little more documentation, but we had been doing that level of training for a number of years. But it was kind of gratifying for us to see that the state was right, setting those minimums in there, A, because we think that's good for the profession, and B, because we were already doing that, so we felt pretty good about that. When you look through here, some of you that have not seen this report before, one of the things I caution you about, when they talk about calls for service, when you get into the communications sections, a call for service can be anything from the public calling and reporting a crime, reporting a suspicious activity, to officer-initiated activities as well. And those numbers are all clumped together in that communication section, and that's something, those numbers then funnel through the dispatchers, and that's how that activity is tracked. So don't confuse that with, and you get into the later parts of the report, it'll talk about number of assaults or number of thefts or those kinds, those numbers are indicative of what's occurring in Beatrice. And if you look at those numbers, you'll see that our actual crime rates this last year was pretty low overall. And so we're happy with that, but we all know that that's kind of a secular thing, and so it doesn't necessarily always reflect your community. It's just one of them things that kind of comes and goes, especially if you get a rash of property crimes or those kind of things. Our alcohol-related offenses are significantly lower. We hope that that's a combination of public education, social norms changing, as well as some pretty heavy enforcement in the years preceding that. So with that, I won't take any more of your time other than to be glad to answer questions. We are looking at having an open house for our renovation. We'll probably do that middle of next month. That's all done now, the carpet's in, the heating and air conditioning system's in, the new office furniture that we were able to acquire from Storecraft is in, and it looks incredible. So we'll look forward to maybe next month, before the second council meeting, to get that, so...
Overtime hours are up a little bit.
Yeah, overtime hours, that has to do with when officers are missing. We lost two officers this year. One went to the Omaha Police Division up in Omaha, we haven't lost an officer to them. I think that was my first one, we've lost to him, and that was a younger guy. And so then we also, apparently, the city needed a building inspector, and under the cover of darkness, my patrol officer became the building inspector, and no one was more surprised than me. But it was a good thing for him, so we were happy for him.
So if you look at the overtime hours...
Yes, sir.
Full-time equivalents is two thousand and eighty hours.
Yes.
Part of that is made up of, part of those, that money for that time is made up in some, of grants?
Correct.
For different programs that you have?
Yes, primarily, that's traffic enforcement grants. Highway safety provides us, or provides the opportunity for agencies in the state to apply for grants. If you turn to page six, it lists the grants here. So we get reimbursed, that money goes out, but we get reimbursed for all of the salaries that are involved in the enforcement of that grant, as well as mileage for the police cars and any expenses that we have. So we get money back there. One of the things that is unfortunate, or however you want to look at it, factor of police work is, a police officer, by the nature of their job, will generate a certain amount of overtime. Sometimes you think, well, if I had more officers, maybe I would cut down on overtime. Sometimes that's a case for fill-in, but an officer will have court, he will have a late report, those kind of different things. Those are going to occur. If you have more police officers, you're actually going to have more of that. And so you manage that best you can, but that's just kind of the nature of a police officer's job.
Rich? You lost two, are you planning to replace them, or...
I'm sorry, they've been replaced.
They have?
Yeah. If you look back, if you look in here, it'll replace them with Doug Hemminger and Tim Price.
Okay.
Mr. Morgan?
The only thing I thought I was saying, too, on the overtime, does that also include trying to balance out the number of days off? Because you've got a number of police, people on the force that have probably earned vacation at the top ranks, and that, I mean, that's, trying to plan the schedule has to be a challenge.
Well, yeah, as your, as your employees become more tenured, they accumulate more vacation time. Our people don't use a lot of their sick time, but they accumulate more vacation time. And so, yeah, it's just one of the other things you have to deal with when you're doing scheduling and you're trying to fill shifts in and so forth. And we staff with safety in mind, meaning we have, we have minimum staffing levels that we have to keep, and our primary focus most of the time is just making sure we have enough officers that it's safe for them.
Anybody else? I notice you've got eighty-nine-one-one hang-up calls.
Yep.
Does that concern you?
No, I like them. I'll tell you why I like them, is the system's working. Those nine-one-one hang-up calls, I don't have the exact number, but my guess is at least half of those are people that are calling and can't give us the information that they need to give us. Maybe they're in a domestic disturbance type of thing, or they are injured, they can't speak, so they can dial nine-one-one. Our system tells us where they're calling from, and we go there.
Sure.
The other half of the time, simply testing our system. And just so the public knows, we respond to every single one of those. We don't, we don't have them call back and make sure, see if everything's hunky-dory, we go to those.
So if somebody's just testing the system, when you go out there, do you have a conversation with those folks?
We have a very good conversation.
Good.
But we don't see that very often, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't, we don't see that, you know, the, we have, I have some real funny stories about kids that have called nine-one-one, and we get there and, you know, they found out it was a kid upstairs called nine-one-one, and because he was sure there was a monster under the bed, and who else would you call but the police? But his parents didn't know he'd called. So, I mean, we've seen those kind of things, we live with that, that's fine.
Then you have a domestic dispute there between mom and the kid.
Yeah.
Your fleet, the cars, everything in pretty decent shape?
The fleet is, is okay. And this is a, it's a money issue, we understand how that works. I can, you know, say with all sincerity that we need to replace a car every year. If we don't, we get behind, and then we start having, it comes up, and our maintenance costs come up. And overall, you know, my car at home has got a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles on it and chugging along just fine, but my wife drives it most of the time, and it's not a police car. And so they, you know, their longevity is just not what the average person's car is. Having said that, they're really made well these days. I mean, compared to what, when Ted and I first started, the cars you drove were pretty scary, now they're pretty nice.
One other question I have...
But they're faster.
No, they're not faster.
One other question I have is, how is the School Resource Officer Program working?
That's a really positive program. I get constant positive feedback from that. One of the big concerns, and we looked into that this year actually, in some places that have school resource officers, they saw a large increase in their juvenile referrals to the criminal justice system, meaning that the school resource officers were writing a lot of tickets for things that maybe they wouldn't have gotten tickets for in years past. And so my concern was, you know, I make sure ours, we weren't doing that, because that's counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish there, and we weren't doing that. We haven't seen that increase at all. So that was good. It's, you know, it's like every job, and those of you that have employees can know, it's kind of who's, who you got in that spot and how successful it is. Zach Lowenstein's our school resource officer, does a bang-up job, we've been lucky to have good people in there. Aaron Byrne set the standard before, and, I mean, so we've been fortunate, so it's been an all-good deal. The biggest problem we have is they'd really like to have him full-time at the high school and full-time at the middle school, and so...
Bob?
Oh, the only thing, I was going to comment, going back to the vehicles, you know, thirteen thousand for repairs last year is pretty phenomenal, when you look at the miles and the age of the vehicles that are on there, you know?
And, you know, we take good care of them, we have a new, we have a contract agent, or contract service place, we take bids every so often, and they'll come in and make a bid on that. And Pro Auto Tune is the company now, I'll give him a plug, because does a bang-up job for us. And then, of course, if they're warranted cars, then the local dealerships take care of them, which we have some of those, too.
It's about three hundred and forty-five miles a day that these guys drive.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Chief, thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is legislative update. And Tobias has a listing of some legislative bills in your packet.
There's, yes, there's another one in your packet that we're following. Again, I'll answer questions on any of them, just wanted to bring your attention to two of them, that being LB-150. You'll notice it's already up for final reading, so it's been fast-tracked through the legislature this year. And in it, it redefines some terms in the LB-840 law, namely, it says that political subdivisions are not qualifying businesses. If you remember, as you read through LB-840, you can make loans, grants, et cetera, to qualifying businesses. And this one clearly states that a school district or a city itself is not a qualifying business, and so therefore, they're not eligible for those funds. Obviously, this points to some, some city somewhere did something that a legislature didn't like, and they're changing that rule now. The other one is LB-151. Again, you'll notice that final reading. This one states that if a financial institution has begun a foreclosure process, the city can request a name and address of where to send nuisance complaints to it. However, it doesn't give the bank or the financial institution any requirement to clean up the property, it simply gives us another name and address to contact and let them know. So I'm not sure how helpful it is in the long run, but it is also probably going to be passed here shortly and become law, so...
How do you pass on the city fees, then?
Right now, we have to go to the property owner. So while it's in the foreclosure process, the homeowner is still responsible for all of the fees until the deed is filed. And the hard part is, is working that out, because the homeowner says, "Well, I've deeded it back to the bank, but they haven't filed it yet," or "I'm being foreclosed on," and so they've essentially walked away from it, but the bank doesn't own it yet, and so...
So when the bank does own it, who gets the bill?
After the bank requires ownership of it, anything that occurs after that, the bank would. Anything before that goes to the previous owner.
Makes sense.
Can't you blow that out of turnip?
No.
I got a couple of questions.
Tim?
Tobias, the sixty-six is with, has to do a TIF. Five ninety-six has to do a TIF. Two thirty-eight has to do a TIF. Why aren't these all in the same thing? I mean, why, you know, Davis has done one, Groan's done one, Shoemaker's done one, I'm not sure why they're not all, and you're monitoring, but first, my question is, one, why aren't we supporting them? Two, why aren't they all under one bill? They all have to do with the same problem.
Because each one of those legislature identifies a different problem, is what they see in the TIF program. Some believe that TIF itself is a horrible thing and needs to be gone completely, some just believe that certain cities have gone too far, and they want to clamp down on it. Other thinks it's great, and they just want to slightly tweak it, i.e., change the blight in some standard terminology. And so each one has their own different thing they're trying to accomplish.
So you're, I take it that you and Greg determine which one of these that you're going to support?
I do, I just read through them. If there's one that I want to support in the means of sending a letter to, or go up and testify on behalf of, we bring it to you guys and discuss your...
I just noticed that our Senator Baker has three or four, four different things, I take that back, three, because he has one of them that's withdrawn, and I noticed that we were only monitoring, one of them weren't supporting it, and I just thought that he's our representative, and we need to work with him, and he needs to work with us, and I thought we should support everything he's put in there, but...
One of the ones that he has introduced deals more with school districts than does cities, and so we could support it, but he really needs the school to support it more than he needs us to support it.
Yeah, I get that, it's just that, you know, we've kind of ended this thing with the school, you know, as part of our branding thing, and I'd like to see the overlap.
And we've got no problems going up and supporting more of these, but...
Or at least a letter.
I mean, without your blessing, that's why we've kind of stayed out of supporting or opposing some of these more than others.
I get that, that was all I had.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, monthly administrators' report, that's in your packet also.
Again, it's in your packet, feel free to ask any questions. As Chief Lang indicated, the workup to the police department has been completed, everything's put back, and that's taken care of. Also would note that the lighting project at Hannibal Park is completed, they're in and out and done already, and so that project has been completed as well. Outside of that, answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
How about my light?
Your lights are ordered, I don't know if they've been delivered yet, I haven't asked Pat, so...
Edith is under control.
They will be put up at Nichols Park here shortly.
Okay, if there's nothing else, our next city council meeting is going to be March second, right here in these chambers at seven PM. Our council work session will be a week from today. Our council work session will be a week from today, February 23rd.
Where's that? Margaret? Here.
Here. Right here. Next item on the agenda is, I'd like to go into executive session.
Mayor, I'm with the Beatrice City Council. Going to close session at 8:11 PM for the protection of public interest to discuss real estate.
Been moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, to go into executive session at 8:11 PM.